Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here tonight. I just want to start out by saying thank you to all of our crews, our emergency responders, our firefighters, our policemen, and everybody on our staff who's been working so hard over the past 12 to 24 hours working on this issue. I know we have a lot of damage in the city, and we're very grateful for the responders and the people we have on staff who've been working so hard. So, we're thinking about everyone. We have all of you in our thoughts and prayers who have been suffering all kinds of damage throughout the day, and we look forward to getting everything back on track with our emergency resources that we have. We are going to start tonight on a little lighter note, though, to congratulate Mr. John Ankeny here and all of his wonderful achievements for Beaver Creek Soccer this year. So, I have a proclamation that I'd like to read for you. Whereas, the Creek Classic Soccer Tournament is in its 27th year of successful operation and has become one of the largest two-day tournaments in the country. And, whereas the Creek Classic brings approximately 11,000 people to the Beaver Creek area, which includes more than 6,000 players, along with their coaches, parents, and managers. And, whereas the Creek Classic brings in about $10 million to the local economy. And, whereas the Creek Classic, part of the Beaver Creek Soccer Association, Beaver Creek's largest organization which attracts thousands of people to the Beaver Creek area, is a nonprofit organization operated solely for the betterment of the youth of Beaver Creek. Now, therefore, I, Joanna Garcia, Vice Mayor of the City of Beaver Creek, Ohio, along with the entire city council, do hereby proclaim June 1st and June 2nd, 2019, as Creek Classic Days in Beaver Creek, and urge all citizens of our community to join me in recognition of this outstanding occasion. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything you would like to tell everyone about the upcoming Creek Classic?
Well, a little bit, please.
Yes.
Had a whole speech written out, and I didn't know.
That'd be great. No, please.
Not for me. That's probably not good. We changed the creek a little bit a year ago when we had three places around the country that were probably having 5,000 kids or so. And we finally decided this was a Beaver Creek operation, so we keep it in Beaver Creek, play all the games at our facilities. We did learn, they liked that better, our visiting teams from around the country, because we have good, we have great fields. And, I've got more thanks than you can imagine of reducing the number and keeping it all in Beaver Creek. So, that's kind of a pat on our back, and hopefully we deserve it. If you want to see what this many kids look like, come out on the weekend.
Hey, John, does that include the fields at Trayvon, then?
No, we're only playing at the complex. Last year, we did the same thing. It was quite successful. We're doing it again this year. We have good fields, and the traveling teams appreciate. We're having 215 teams. Before, we've had as many as 500, which was a burden to us, and we had to spread to three or four, not only Beaver Creek, but at the right path and other places around. And that's become a pretty big load. So, last year, we decided to cut it down and keep everything at our complex. We're doing it again this year, and believe it or not, the people appreciate it.
They're having a little bit of a challenge with their hotel rooms.
Little bit of a challenge with the hotel.
But we have some new hotels.
No, because of the hurricane, because of the tornadoes. I'm just saying.
Yeah, well, in the past, when we were scattered everywhere, we, it was hellacious.
Very hard.
Problem with the hotels. But this helped that problem and kept everything in Beaver Creek, so we get better attendance. So, I hope I got people, a lot of my friends are mad at me, but I said, "It's going to be, it's a Beaver Creek tournament, and that's what we're going to do."
Thanks for all your hard work.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. It's quite an impressive tournament, so we're looking forward to having it this year.
Well, you come see us, I'll buy you a Coke.
Sounds like a deal.
Pepsi has to be.
Has to be Pepsi? All right, I'll take you up on that offer.
Can I have one of these?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. We also have one more proclamation this evening. If Ms. Cherie Hill would come join me. And this proclamation is for scleroderma?
Scleroderma.
Scleroderma.
Miss Van.
Scleroderma. I have to say it multiple times, so I make sure I'm saying it right. So, whereas scleroderma is a chronic progressive autoimmune disease that leads to hardening and thickening of the skin and connective tissues, which affects an estimated 15,000 Ohioans and 300,000 people in the United States. And, whereas a patient's immune system becomes overactive and attacks its own tissues through an overproduction of collagen, causing the thickening and tightening of the skin, as well as serious damage to the internal organs, including the lungs, heart, kidneys, esophagus, and gastrointestinal tract. And, whereas prompt and proper diagnosis and treatment can minimize the symptoms of scleroderma and lessen the chance for irreversible damage, as there is no cure at this time. And, whereas, the Scleroderma Foundation's mission is support, education, and research to help find the cause of and cure for this disease. Now, therefore, I, Joanna Garcia, Vice Mayor of the City of Beaver Creek, Ohio, along with city council, do hereby proclaim the month of June as Scleroderma Awareness Month in the City of Beaver Creek, and urge the citizens of Beaver Creek to support the Scleroderma Foundation in its mission. So, Ms. Hill, if you'd like to tell us a little bit more about this disease.
So, usually, my husband is here to do the proclamation, and he sent me instead. So, we just want to thank everyone for recognizing June as Scleroderma Month. The proclamation means a lot to individuals that are living with the disease, and it means a lot to our family. Kelly's mom passed away from scleroderma, and so each year, we try to do an event, and we do the event on 28 September at the Beaver View Bowling, just right down the street here, and it's from 2:00 to 4:00. So, if anybody has the opportunity to come out and support that event, again, it's going to be September 28th from 2:00 to 4:00. And again, we pass out a lot of literature. You'll get to speak to individuals that are living with scleroderma, and it's a great way to just raise money for the organization and then also get awareness out. So, if you guys can attend, we would greatly appreciate that.
Well, thank you so much for sharing that event with us, and we appreciate you being here. I know you said your husband's normally here, but you are a wonderful replacement, and we are very happy to have you here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. All right, well, let's have a call. This meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Current.
Here.
Councilmember Littrell.
Here.
Councilmember Rushing.
Here.
Councilmember Upton.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
I'd like to make.
Mayor Stone. He's absent.
And then, we'd like to make a motion to excuse Mayor Stone.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Mayor Stone until he arrives. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, I will turn the meeting over to Councilmember Littrell for the prayer and pledge. Can you all rise, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd just like to follow up with Vice Mayor Garcia, mentioned at the beginning of the broadcast and the meeting. We have all obviously been affected by this tragedy of the tornado that affected Beaver Creek, and so we want to thank our first responders, we want to thank the city staff, and all the citizens that have just showed up and to help and to assist and to provide some friendship, assistance, and we've just, we're blessed with this wonderful community, and we're blessed with the people that live here, and we appreciate all of the just wonderful gifts from these folks of providing just a smile, handshake, water, whatever it may be. We truly have a wonderful community. Thank you.
Thank you. We have an agenda before us this evening. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
And Vice Mayor, I'd like to make one change to the agenda, and that is to remove the executive session, item 12.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to remove the executive session for item 12. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Do we have an approve, or we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the amended agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. So, let's start right in. Ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs.
This is a third reading of an ordinance determining to proceed with the acquisition, construction, and improvement of certain public improvements in the City of Beaver Creek, Ohio, in cooperation with the Beaver Creek Energy Special Improvement District and declaring an emergency.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Oh, yes, Vice Mayor and council and everyone. With respect to both this item and item B, the next PACE piece of legislation there, the financing company and the applicant have requested that this be tabled and it be brought back before, on June 10th, the next regularly scheduled council meeting. They're working through some of the final application and figure requirements to get through this, which is required, and they will be ready on the 10th. I've been told. I've talked to one of the attorneys this morning.
No big deal. It's just something that's taking longer than originally planned.
It is. There's a whole, you have to go through a whole certification process to make sure that the energy savings as predicted are in fact there, and then you have to line that up with the financing of it, and also then tie that to the amount of the special assessments to make sure that everything matches up, so that over the course of this PACE agreement, that the special assessments will in fact pay off plus interest, the debt, and the costs incurred here. And so, they're working through the final numbers, and my understanding as of this morning, they simply were not ready to go forward. Actually, as of last week, they just said, "We're not getting ready."
Can you remind the audience why this is a benefit to people that need to replace their air conditioning and furnace units that just got blown off by the tornado?
Well, it probably is not a benefit to individuals because the cost of financing and operation of this is just probably not practical. These tend to be transactions that are in excess of half a million dollars. So, they tend to be more commercial, larger. It can be both commercial remodeling or commercial new construction, but to a commercial operation where, especially in this case, a new building, the cost of financing is offsets the cost of the increased efficiency of the equipment, and therefore, it is cost-effective still to pay more for better equipment that is more efficient, and yet recognizing, you know, the financing will offset some of that over time. So, unfortunately, this program is, will not, is just simply not designed for an individual who lost a unit. It really doesn't function in that process. It requires, it just, the cost are, the costs are going to very likely be as much or close to what the cost of a new unit would cost. So.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion for ordinance 19-04?
Vice Mayor, I move to table ordinance 1904 till the June 10th, 2019 regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to table 19-04 to the June 10th regular meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and our malleant mayor has returned.
I would make a motion to table ordinance 19-05, which is the accompanying.
I am.
I am.
I am.
I am.
I am.
Are you ready to read that?
I am. This is a third reading of an ordinance letting special assessments for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, and improving certain public improvements in the City of Beaver Creek, Ohio, in cooperation with the Beaver Creek Energy Special Improvement District, authorizing and improving an energy project cooperative agreement by and among the City of Beaver Creek, Ohio, the Beaver Creek Energy Special Improvement District, Green Innkeepers LLC and Pace Equity LLC, providing for the financing of those public improvements, authorizing and improving a special assessment agreement by and between the City of Beaver Creek, Ohio, the County Treasurer of Green County, Ohio, Pace Equity LLC, the Beaver Creek Energy Special Improvement District, and Pace Equity LLC regarding those special assessments and declaring an emergency.
Thank you.
I would move to table ordinance 19-05 until the next regular meeting.
I have a motion and a second to table ordinance 19-05 to the next regular scheduled meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Before we move on, I'd like to ask someone to make a motion to amend the agenda order so that we can move the liquor permit, item number six, so that the chief, who's been on duty for hours and hours and hours, can make that presentation and move on. So, I have a motion, please.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move item 6A to before item 5C. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chief.
Mayor. Do you have the agenda item by any chance I can look at?
Yeah.
Thank you. I haven't had time to print that, so.
We understand.
I appreciate you letting me borrow that. It is a transfer of liquor permit, 1504 Falcons Food LLC doing business TGI Fridays. Division of Liquor Control sent us notification to transfer the D5, D6 liquor permit from Ohio Valley Bistro, Inc., doing business as TGI Fridays, 2799 Center Drive, to Falcons Food LLC, still doing business as TGI Fridays. Background checks were done that are required by the Division of Liquor Control. Staffs recommending the application request move forward without comment.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 1504 Falcons Food doing business as TGI Fridays. I'd like the motion to have this motion to accept without comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Chief, while you're there, do you have 30 seconds that you might want to give a very, very brief update on today's events?
I do. As you know, we responded in. Captain and I were probably the first ones in here last night when, after the tornado passed through. We've had all of our personnel in at different times overnight, some of them in as long as the captain and I. We have a new platoon coming in at 7:00. They'll be in until probably 11:00 tomorrow morning. But again, a lot of our effort last night, once the tornado got through here, was search and rescue, trying to get into the areas that were blocked and where people were trapped so that we could get the aid to them that they needed. Obviously, we were doing that in conjunction with the fire department, so again, that's what we trained to do. Not everything runs as smoothly as you would hope, but that's why we do after-action reports, and we'll do one with us to identify where we can improve should we have to, you know, have a joint venture in the future. But, again, we're proceeding, trying to get all the roadways open, which I'm sure everybody has experienced today. Our major north-south artery through the city, North Fairfield Road, was not passable due to the power poles and power lines. Hopefully, that'll change overnight. That will help us tremendously get some of that volume off of Grange Hall where all the damage is to begin with. Looking at it from the air today with the sheriff, again, you can see the path and the devastation. We're very fortunate that it was not worse than what it was, and we had minor injuries because if you get back into the Garden View Platte and the area up there off Grange Hall, there's a lot of devastation, and thank God, no one was killed or seriously injured. So.
Well, thank you, and I hope you get some sleep this evening, and we'll see you tomorrow.
All righty. We'll be here right now. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. Thanks, chief.
Let's move on to item 5C, ordinance 19-06.
This is a second reading of an ordinance rezoning 1.595 acres from B-2 and A-1, further described as Book 5, Page 5, Parcells 123 and 24, on the property tax maps of Green County, Ohio, to CPUD 19-1.
Thank you. This is the second reading of this ordinance. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address council, as this is a public hearing? Anyone at all? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Any comments from council? Then this will naturally move on to the third reading. Thank you.
Are you waiting for the mayor to sign your proclamation?
No.
Yes.
No, I'm just listening.
If you want to bring it up, he'll sign it for you, though.
It doesn't need signing.
It's okay.
Well, I think we did.
Yeah, mayor needs to sign it for you.
Come on. Just in case you want to sneak out here.
No, I'm fine.
Besides, 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 the mayor wants to thank you for all you do for our community.
Absolutely.
Walk right, walk right around here.
Come on around.
I didn't know where I was going.
Pretty much anywhere.
I'm not sure.
He's shooting me. I think it was.
That's not the right one, there. We got, let me give it one more.
Yeah, I'm a dog.
All right. Creek Classic is always a great event, and we're out there handing out, telling me to hand out some trophies here on Sunday.
We launched it. For what we thought it up for and dreamed it up, and a lot of people in this building said they couldn't do it, but we did it. Now, what were the biggest around, and we bring a lot of money, and that's what it's for.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
We did move ordinance 1906 on, correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right, item D, ordinance 19-07.
This is a second reading of an ordinance to appropriate certain real property interest owed by Carlotta Oldham for the Kemp Road widening project in the City of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you. This is also a second reading, so is there anyone present this evening that would like to address council on this ordinance? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Any comments from council? This will naturally then move on to the third reading. Next item, ordinance 19-08.
This is a first reading of an ordinance providing for the submission to electric amendments to the charter of the City of Beaver Creek, Ohio, and to place the same on the ballot at the general election November 5th, 2019.
Thank you. All right, this is an ordinance, and Mayor, did you want to go over this briefly, or just answer questions? Short straw. Just a brief overview would be much appreciated. Thank you.
I wasn't prepared to speak, but.
Well, you're here.
If you had any questions, I can try to wing this. The first one, 4.02A, changing the term limits to, are you about to bail me out here?
Do you want me to go through it?
Yes.
Do you want me to go through them?
Yeah, that'll be good.
I can go through them real quick.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, yeah, I'll be glad to. Yes, and then certainly you can address questions. But 4.02, first, there are four sections, five sections, excuse me, with changes. 4.02 is to account for if a council member is elected during their second term as council member to that of mayor, they'll be able to serve the full term as mayor and not run up against the term limit there. The item two is 5.03, and that is to reduce from three readings to two readings the adoption of ordinances, though it does clearly also provide in there that should a member of council make a motion to request, it can proceed with the standard traditional three, but it will bring it probably more in line with what is probably more traditionally around the state as far as charter cities. 6.01 will require an affirmative vote of five members of council to appoint a city manager. And 6.03 is effectively the same thing, except it's five members to remove a city manager, so in both cases. And then finally, 9.02 will allow a board or commission member to be appointed to more than one board or commission of the city, as there has been previously a probation which has prevented a person from serving on multiple boards where especially some of the boards are very similar of nature, and so it would be efficient and helpful to have the same person be able to serve on two boards at times. So, those are the changes, and if this is adopted, it will take five forms of votes. It will go to the ballot in November. Okay. Do we have any questions? Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, excuse me, a motion for ordinance 19-08 for the charter amendments to move to the second and third.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 19-08 on to the second and third readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Thank you very much for being here tonight. Thanks for all your, thanks for all the hard work that the committee did.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Mayor.
My pleasure. Appreciate it.
Could I make a brief comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to make sure the citizens are aware that we have the charter review committee, and they go over the charter in a lot of its clean-up language to be in compliance with the revised code. So, for the volunteers that spend their time and effort, we thank you all very much. It's a lot to go over, and some of those changes do not necessarily have to be on the ballot. Some of them are minor in nature, and then some of them, obviously, we would, but we want to thank everyone on that committee, and to let the citizens know that this is something that we do frequently to ensure that we are.
Refined, yep.
Taking and staying ahead and with our policies and our ordinances and our charter actions. So, thank you.
And thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
Anyone else? Do I have a?
We already did it.
All right, resolution, item F, the resolution 19-31.
Hold on, I'm sorry. This is a, hold on. Sorry. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to approve purchasing, travel, and pay cash policies, and authorize the city manager to amend these policies as needed in accordance with the city manager or the city charter grant, with the city charter's grant of authority to the city manager. Sorry.
Thank you. Mr. McHugh, you were going to take this one? Yes, I will, and if it's okay, Mayor and council, if I might, I'm just going to sort of summarize everyone from F through K and do this at once, and certainly we'll get to each one, and council address questions. But, as councils where, by way of a little background, this for the citizens too, there was a question raised several weeks ago with respect to the interplay between Charter Section 10.10 and 4.10. 10.10 has a specific provision that provides that council expenses, if appropriated, addressing the appropriation, there's, that effectively is the approval process, whereas 410 referenced a, referenced a resolution. In looking at that, also, the question dealt with ordinance section 31.11 and 31.17, which reflected a prior process, and so within the process here is recommended, in looking at this, that they be amended. We're doing this also in keeping with what the charter provides, which is, which grants the city manager authority to address policies and deal with these issues. So, part of this also is to provide, both in our streamlined, but also to provide the city manager with authority to revise policies as needed with respect to purchasing, travel, things of this nature, which the city manager previously does, currently does on other policies, makes a number of policies as needed due to changes. Ultimately, at the end of the day, there was ultimately, council will have the ultimate oversight should they decide they don't like a policy, but this would allow the city manager authority to, per the charter, make and change policies as.
but this would allow the city manager authority to, per the charter, make and change policies as, as circumstances determine. The also within this is to address, and again, this is just to follow the higher revised codes opposed to setting a specific dollar amount as far as what is the threshold for bidding and what the requirement is, sets forth the, what, what the process will now be is what the higher revised code provides for, which is significantly larger than, higher than what we currently have, and so this will, this will allow us to set this as needed so we don't have to, you know, come back and change that as required. And again, count, per the charter, under the guise of the city manager, the city manager is in charge of purchasing and contracts and setting up situations of that nature, so again, we're kind of just reiterating what the charter says. Finally, the last three here, the last three resolutions are, and each one of those is to add, based upon, you know, they date back to two thousand seven, two thousand twelve. These were specific policies that are now with, with current policies are no longer, they're frankly in conflict, and so as part of this process and cleanup is to eliminate these, and just the simplest way to eliminate them is to simply repeal them, so that as opposed to trying to amend what, something that we already have a policy on anyway, which would be sort of redundant, so the simple way is just repeal all of them, and that is what is being done. And so, you know, all taken, all these from, what are we up to, you know, from where we start up there with resolution nineteen dash thirty-one through the final resolution nineteen dash thirty-four, those are all items related to these basically two items, two topics.
Alright, well, thank you. It's, so, we're gonna take these one at a time, but is there any discussion on resolution nineteen dash thirty-one? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve resolution nineteen dash thirty-one.
Have a motion and a second to approve resolution nineteen dash thirty-one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next item is ordinance nineteen dash zero nine, which is the same topic that was just discussed, and any questions on it? Do I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, before I do that, this is an ordinance. Do we have anyone present that would like to address counsel on this ordinance?
I need to read it.
Wow. Please do. What are we talking about?
What's happening?
I thought we'd already talked about that.
Who's on first? I don't know who's on second.
We're on G. Nineteen dash nine.
Alright, this is the first reading of an ordinance repealing current section thirty-one point oh one reimbursements of council members for, of expenses of the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio Code of Ordinances, and adopting new section thirty-one point oh one reimbursement of council members for expenses and repealing section thirty-one point one seven expenses of council of the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio Code of Ordinances.
Thank you. Alright, this, this is the first reading of ordinance nineteen oh nine. Is there anyone present that would like to address counsel on this, on this ordinance? Seeing none, we will move on. Any discussion? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move ordinance nineteen dash oh nine to the second, third reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance nineteen dash zero nine on to the second and third reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is ordinance nineteen dash ten.
This is the first reading of an ordinance repealing current sections thirty-five point one seven and thirty-five point one eight of the city of Beaver Creek Code of Ordinances and adopting new section thirty-five point one seven and thirty-five point wait, one eight of the city of Beaver Creek Code of Ordinances in order to revise competitive bidding requirements.
Thank you. Once again, this is the first reading. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address counsel on this ordinance? Seeing none, we will move on. Any discussion? Do I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move nineteen dash ten on to the second and third reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next, resolution nineteen dash thirty-two.
This is a resolution repealing resolutions zero seven dash one nine in order to allow the city manager to exercise authority granted per the city charter.
Thank you. Any discussion? Motion, please.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution nineteen dash thirty-two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next, resolution nineteen dash thirty-three.
This is a resolution repealing resolutions zero seven dash twenty in order to allow the city manager to exercise authority granted per the city charter.
Thank you. Any discussion? Motion, please.
Motion repeal resolution nineteen dash thirty-three or seven dash twenty?
Second.
Just approve resolution dash nineteen dash thirty-three. I have a motion and a second to approve resolution nineteen dash thirty-three. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next, resolution nineteen dash thirty-four.
This is a resolution repealing resolution twelve dash forty-eight in order to allow the city manager to exercise authority granted per the city charter.
Any discussion? Motion?
I move.
Second.
I move to approve resolution nineteen dash thirty-four.
I have a motion and a second, not in that order, but I have a motion and a second to approve resolution dash thirty-four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next, resolution nineteen dash thirty-five.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement with the Beaver Creek Soccer Association.
Thank you. Oh, there we go. Hi, Kim.
Hello. Good evening. So this is just an extended lease agreement. We've been in agreement with them for, since nineteen ninety-four. Basically, they had the Ankeny Soccer Complex. The city of Beaver Creek owns twenty-five acres of that. They operate and maintain the entire complex for us, and then we get to use a couple of their fields for our adult leagues. So we would just like to go ahead and extend the agreement, and we're looking at doing it in like five-year increments.
Questions?
I believe the lease agreement is for a hundred dollars. I think we can afford that.
They, they give us the hundred.
Oh, they give us the.
Yeah, so it's really not a bad deal.
Approve it, come on. Yeah, did we put this out the bid?
No. So where are these fields? It's the Ankeny Soccer Complex over on Orchard.
Any further discussion?
I would move to approve resolution nineteen dash thirty-five.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution dash nineteen dash thirty-five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, resolution nineteen dash thirty-six.
This is a resolution strongly urging the Ohio governor and members of the Ohio General Assembly to restore the local government fund to pre-recession levels.
Thank you. This is something that we previously discussed briefly, and I assume everybody's had a chance to read it. If we're all good, or you want to discuss it any further, we can. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve resolution nineteen dash thirty-six.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution nineteen dash thirty-six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. And just to clarify a little bit for the public, this is a motion to urge the, the governor and the General Assembly to, to try to help restore at least some more, some additional amount of our local government funds. Next, oh, we got that one already. Next item, decision items. Board appointments. Alright. So we have a vacancy on the bikeway and non-motorized transportation committee. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Do you need to read anything on this one?
Nope.
Okay. Do I have a motion to open nominations?
I move to open nominations for the bikeway and non-motorized transportation committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Nominations. Anyone who want to nominate?
I'd like to nominate Kelly Fass.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I move to close nominations for the bikeway and non-motorized transportation committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Do I have an appointment, a motion to appoint?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kelly Fass to the bikeway and non-motorized transportation committee for the term ending February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on now. You're doing a good job. Counsel time. Who would like to start?
Well, I would just like to remind everyone again, I think that the senior center, Mr. Thonero, how late is that open this evening for the wa, for the ice? Do we know?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock, so.
And it's just in the parking lot.
Just in the parking lot. So there is, for those that have been affected by the tornado and the issues that we've had today, just a reminder that the senior center is open till eight tonight. So if you do need, I believe it's just ice, I think it's a DP, DPNL station that they're doing that, which I think is wonderful, again, great community, and we appreciate our partners there. There are several people without power, without, you know, other things that they need. Make sure if you are giving donations, please check to make sure that those places are, such as the Red Cross. Bless you. Want to make sure that those are actual places that you donate. While we are a great community of friends and we want to take care of one another, this is also a time where we have unscrupulous folks try to take advantage. So just make sure you pay attention to your surroundings and what's going on. And I did receive an email, if you do not live in the areas that are affected, please do not, I don't want to call it sightseeing, but gawking. And just remember, there's some debris out there, so there's nails, there's lots of. Yes, lots of things out there that, you know, that is still a hazard, so use some common sense and, you know, let's, let's work to, work with the community and work with our, our neighbors, but let's also work to have a common goal of getting us back to normal operations and helping those in need. And then along with that, I just have the specialty day camps. Again, we really want to push Parks and Rec because we have a great Parks and Rec here in our city, and so we have lots of events for two thousand nineteen and July twenty-fourth and twenty-eighth. We have one coming up for ages six to ten with the history mysteries. So that's a great one. Please check with the Parks and Rec Department because there are lots of great places and things that you can do with your children. And again, thanks to Mr. Aitney for the opportunities that he provides thousands of children with our, with the Aitney Soccer Fields because not only does he bring a lot of revenue in, he is just such a mainstay here in Beaver Creek. So what a great opportunity.
Thank you. Counselor Rose.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure the whole council would wish to thank our police, fire, and public service departments for the fine work that they've done these last several hours. I know someone personally who was affected in Spicer Heights, and throughout the night, this individual was contacted by public safety personnel multiple times throughout the night in person, and shows a true dedication and planning and action of what our public safety, police, fire, and public service do for our community. Just last Thursday, hate to say ironically, but just last Thursday, I attended a fire department EMS open house where they showed a lot of the equipment and personnel and the programs that they have for emergency services. And it's, you know, eye-opening, you see it from one end to the next. I just want to again reiterate what all members of council, I'm sure, will speak to, but the, the great work that our staff has done as well as the township staff. So thank you to them, and here we go on to cleanup and bond together as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Member Van.
It is quite a tragedy, and thank you for all the work the city staff and all the first responders have done. I'm anxious to hear what you talked to the, to the governor about, so when it comes your turn. There is a question, of course, about the sirens. I just thought maybe somebody would want to address that. We've addressed that other times where we talk about the fact that in the twenty-first century, we get alerts on our cell phones. Actually, there was a, what's the, I got a telephone call last night telling me to go to my basement. What's that called, the red? Code red. So each household got a phone call. So we have other things in the twenty-first century, and in the past, we've, we've thought that having sirens wasn't the most cost-effective choice because they're extremely expensive when we have these technology choices also. But because a couple of citizens are already asking about that, I just thought I'd bring it up one more time. I want to compliment the, the staff and the mayor on the wonderful Memorial Day ceremony. It turned out gorgeous, and the Rotary is the one that arranged for all those flags to be on the Church of the Nazarene property. Individual Rotary members each bought one from, and arranged for them to be posted there, and it was quite the spectacle. It was very impressive. It just really was a nice thing, so I wanted to thank the Rotary for making that happen. And that's it.
Thank you. Counselor Member Upton.
Thank you, Mayor Stone. Yeah, I'd like to echo everyone's thoughts and sentiments on to our first responders and crews that have been out working for the last twenty-four hours. Just phenomenal effort by everybody to get through the tragedy here. To follow up to Councilor Van's point on the flags there at the church, actually, this morning I had, I won't say the pleasure, but I went by that area shortly after the tornado, and already volunteers were out there repairing and picking up the flags that had been damaged. That was a priority for them, and that was really cool to see. You know, amongst all the damage and everything, we still had people carrying about the flag and making sure it was displayed properly. So I thank those volunteers, I don't know if they're Rotarians or if they're Optimist members or if they're church members, but thank those individuals that I saw this morning. And then also thank you to the staff that put in time on Memorial Day while many folks had the day off, to put on those wonderful presentations and events there at the Veterans Park and Memorial. I appreciate the efforts everyone puts into that.
Fewer, fewer glitches. We've really got it down pat now. Fewer glitches.
Counselor Member Carr.
Caducee to you, Mayor, and I saw so the staff. It was an excellent veterans program on Memorial Day over at the park, and I think we had a lot of people very, very appreciative of the entire ceremony. The Rotary Club has already been mentioned that they're kind of pioneering this flag effort this year, and we had a program out there at Be Hope Church, and it rained, so we all went into the shelter, and the president of the organization continued the ceremony in there, kind of highlighting that point. Also, I wanted to again congratulate the chief and the whole staff for everything that's already been done here to meet the challenges that we faced here over the last twenty-four hours with this tornado, and I think they did a fantastic job. Last thing is the lifelong learning over at the Beaver Creek Senior Citizens. They're gonna have their second round of classes that are gonna be starting here in August. They have one that's called the War on Ohio. It's gonna be presented by a gentleman by the name of Mike Taint. Then they're also gonna have a History of American Railroads, I think, taught by a gentleman by the name of Paul Cooper. That's gonna be the, the second class that we have, so it was very, very successful, the first round, and looking forward to the second. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Garcia.
And thank you for.
Thank you. Like, I'm actually, and just echoing everyone's thanks for our city staff who's beyond fantastic, and we can't say enough about them, and our police and fire department. Huge thank you to our city manager and mayor. The mayor wandered in just a few minutes late this evening because he's been working around the clock since this all started. Pete, I've been getting emails and texts from Pete since two this morning, so everyone up here has been doing their part and working extraordinarily hours to try to have everything come together, so we couldn't be more grateful for all of the work that you two do as well. Just on a lighter note, I do want to congratulate the Beaver Creek Academic Team for coming in first place in the nation, which is not just a Beaver Creek first, it is an Ohio first. That a high school in the state of Ohio came in first place at national, so that is very deserving of our recognition, and I know kind of overshadowed by some of the events of last evening, but very important and definitely something I wanted to mention. I am a very short individual, if anyone's seen me outside of heels. I know this trophy is taller than me, but if anyone goes on the Beaver Creek Academic Team, City Schools, or Athletic Boosters Facebook page, you will see how tall the trophy actually is, and it is taller than some of the students who are. actually is, and it is taller than some of the students who are much taller than me in person as well. So not just their wonderful achievements, but the wonderful trophy that they brought to the area, we could not be more proud of the Beaver Creek academic team. So, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and I'm glad you brought that up because that's a very big, very big item to discuss. Well, it's been, Pete and I have had a long night and a long day, and it's been educational. Before I get into that, I do want to echo the sentiments to staff for Memorial Day one more time, a fantastic job. I like to take the credit, but I know I can't because it really belongs to staff, and they do such a fantastic job of setting it up and making the rest of us look good. So thank you. And of course, the Air Force Band of Flight, the Boy Scouts, the VFW, the American Legion, and all these people pitch in every year and make this a tremendous event. The two flag organizations outside of the city are the, of course, the Rotary and the Optimists, so they're scattered all over the city, and it just, you know, you just can't go around anywhere until last night and not see a lot of flags up. So it's just a great symbol in our city. As far as, as far as our hurricane, Pete, just chime in anytime to, or tornado, I'm sorry. I'm tired. The, uh... The EOC was set up down, I think you all got information about that down at Station One, and the staging area was over at Spicer Height Shopping Center. And being in the dark, it was just almost spooky, you know, to see the damage at dark, and then to go out this morning and see it in the daylight, it was mind-blowing. We did have a very distinguished visitor today. The governor came, the lieutenant governor came as well, and he didn't make the same tour, but he went on a separate tour of his own. And of course, the governor is, you know, he visited Trotwood, he visited other places throughout the state today, and there's, I don't think there's any doubt that there will be some sort of formulation of some sort of assistance at some point. Just what that'll be, we don't know yet. We've had calls from other departments, the treasurer stayed called, we've had other people from the governor's office call. We were having trouble with a certain energy provider as far as communications, not that they weren't doing their job, just not communicating it well, and a little, a little bird from the governor's office makes the right call, and it wasn't two minutes they were calling back. So it's, you know, a lot of people from all over, and I'm sure you guys have gotten mails, emails and texts too from friends and family all over the country, have reached out to see how we're doing. Our neighbors have all reached out, Fairborn, Xenia, Riverside, Dayton, all to offer their condolences, even though Dayton was hit really bad itself. So it's been one of those days, and it, you know, we're, it's going to be more detailed, Pete, don't you think, tomorrow? Once we get fresh people on the ground and we, we've gotten through these first initial things we had to overcome, the declaration of emergency was primarily due to, well, it was, not primarily, it was due to the fact that we had gas, massive gas leaks...
And electric lines.
And electric lines down, and those two just don't go together. And so that was the reason for that, so that we could force evacuations. That's taken place. I believe the, the, all the gas now is off, and so it's a lot safer now than it was, but all the power lines are not. As the chief said, hopefully by morning sometime, we will find that most of the power lines are back in place, not on necessarily, not providing power, but at least back in place and making it safe. There's one item I want to discuss after the meeting's over, and I'll let you know that one in a little bit. Pete, you want to add to it a little bit, and then we'll see what kind of questions we have?
Well, just, Mayor, thanks. I do want to thank staff, you know, the township as well. We're set up at the Emergency Operations Center, if you ever hear, EOC, that's what that stands for. You know, I'm still in the same outfit I was ten-thirty last night, so very busy day, but, you know, chief was there, myself was at the EOC, fire chief, Van Ambrose, was there as well, and his staff. And I mean, we worked, I mean flawlessly. You would thought we worked together for a hundred years. Just the dedication of both teams working together was outstanding, something we definitely should be proud of. Then at the staging area, you had Captain Molnar was there for the police, and Mike Thonero, both of those guys have been up as many hours as I have been as well, so we've got a lot of tired people here. But you know what? It, it just, it really pulled together in the, in the spirit that can only be described as Beaver Creek. I just let everybody know, even as I was texting information at two o'clock in the morning, I was posting on Facebook information as well. So, you know, that's a good place to find out information, what roads closed, what to stay out of, you know, the declaration of the emergency happened about two-ten AM this morning by mayor. You know, basically, like he said, just because of the, when you got a major gas leak, you don't want to lose a whole block, city block to, to an explosion. But there are two press releases just been released to the press, they may be picked up by news channels, and they are also posted on social media. And one is the, the lifting of the mandatory evacuation has been ordered by the fire and police department. So those can, we're not saying go home and that it's all perfect and safe, it is very dangerous, but the gas is off. Doesn't mean that there's not still live electric wires, and not debris that could fall on you, and not safe conditions, we are not saying that, but the gas is off.
I think we're encouraging with people, if they will need to go back and get something from their home, that now it's clear enough to do that.
And be very careful.
We don't recommend that they stay there.
Stay there, nope. And so that's one, and then please look at another press release that in, in an effort to help, there's going to be a lot of debris, so we will be doing a process that's outlined in the memo, the press release about debris collection. I'm talking about branches, I'm talking about yard debris, I'm not talking about drywall and two-by-fours and that type of thing, that will have to be taken care of separately. But definitely look at the press releases for additional information, and please continue to follow. As we get updates, we update it, and I think I've, I've heard from many, many people, thank you for the updates. Even the press is, is picking up on it. I put it out there, and I, I've literally heard it on TV two minutes later, so they really are monitoring our Facebook page. So thank you for all, everybody's patience, it's been great. I do want to mention, you know, our guys, the public work guys out there, you know, with the police going door-to-door, the fire going door-to-door, all that kind of stuff was happening, and yet, you know, our, even public services were going out there with, you know, dangerous, dark, pitch dark, trying to move trees, electrical lines down, all that kind of stuff. So I give it to our road crews as well, they were really putting, putting it on the line to help try to get emergencies crews through areas at cars and police ambulances. We had a firehouse damaged as well out on Kemp Road, blew the doors in, damaged an engine and an ambulance, windshields blew them out, so the fire department had to overcome that right off the get-go. So we got some damages of, you know, property ourselves that we'll have to deal with as well in the future. But, you know, thank, thanks to everybody for pulling together as Beaver Creek, and we'll be here for you and help, so if you have questions, please, you know, read the press releases and don't hesitate to contact us with questions. That's all.
And I traveled around town today, it was, I mean, it was rewarding to see the number of people out there working in their yards and working in their neighbors' yards or whatever. I mean, it's just, they're out there cleaning up their community, and it's just very rewarding. The, the EOC, I went down for a little while, and as Pete said, it was running so smooth, I said, I don't need to be here. But then when Pete called and says, we need a state of emergency, I, I, that I agreed to, and I didn't tell him though, but I said, well, I just had, if I'm going to issue a state of emergency, I'm going to find it out. So I went over to the staging area. Now that was, that was not necessarily the right move for me to make, I don't think, but it was...
I hollered at it for doing it.
But I was one that I had to know why I was issuing an emergency. So I did go over, and that's what kept me up most of the night, but it is, I, I want to thank the township, the county has stepped up. We've had offers, like I said before, assistance from others. And so what I want to do now is just see, if you guys have questions, what, what is it that we didn't, you think we might not have covered for you so far? There's going to be a lot more that'll come out tomorrow, I think, be a lot clearer. But if, nothing?
Was there any, any city property? How about Whartonshire Park?
I don't, somebody did say that there was a barn...
The barn at Harding, Hardinger is damaged severely.
At Whartonshire?
Whartonshire, yeah.
That's too bad, because it's a nice barn.
I know, just redone. I haven't been able to get details of it, but it's, I saw pictures, and it's severely damaged.
So any other city property?
I don't think there was any other city property.
Because how about the golf course?
You know, the golf course escaped.
Okay, because it was enough salt.
It was, it was a narrow, it was a narrow path. I mean, well, it wasn't narrow, narrow, but it was narrow enough that it stayed south of the mall, but still...
Pretty much along Kemp Road, just north, it bounced south for a second, and then just carried on. There's a, Kim, there's a, one of the Royal Point Park, one of the new, what do you call those blue things, the tarps?
Shade.
Shade structures. One is detached, so you might want to check that out, saw that on the way, on the way back, you know? So we'll, we'll be making rounds to checking out that kind of stuff, but right off the bat, I don't know of any besides the barn. I guess the log cabin survived because those could have been wiped out very easily as well, because that was right there in that path. So, but as far as I know, that's it. We'll update you if we find out anything else is damaged.
Anyone else?
Mayor Stone, I'd like, in the coming days, it doesn't have to be anytime soon, but as I think one of the councilmembers alluded to in their comments, you know, we're going to have folks come in and try to be contractors and roofers and try to take advantage of some of our citizens. If we can put together a, a tip sheet or, you know, quick contacts with the Better Business Bureau, you know, to get some references on some of these potential contractors and put that on our Facebook and other social media, I think that'd be a great idea to put out there for our folks. Again, don't do it tonight, we've got other pressing issues.
Councilmember Upton, the police department usually have something similar to that that, that Pete can grab and post on there. I think that's very important because that's when, you know, when you have, you know, as much as we see greatness and people working together, we also have those unscrupulous folks that come out at this time, too. So we just have to be, you know, vigilant and stay, pay attention.
Yep, and then I did say in the press release that you talked about the county environmental services is going to be open and taking on some of the yard waste, but I know we've partnered with, I think it was Waste Management in years past, to do some neighborhood cleanups. Might be an opportunity to revisit those, especially in the affected areas here in the coming months, as folks do get into the drywalls and the two-by-fours and get away from the yard waste opportunities.
Very good.
So is that the yard waste place on Xenia?
The yard, where are we taking the yard waste?
It's Greenway Boulevard, twenty-one forty-five Greenway Boulevard in Xenia.
Environmental Service, the recycling.
No, I was just wondering. Never mind, never mind.
Okay. Anyone else?
I missed it.
All right, this next item on the agenda is citizen comment. Anyone here tonight want to address counsel on any issue? Seeing none, we will move forward. The next item has been removed from the agenda, and so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.